The Old Clare City Council is about to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, the Constitution of the United States, and to the Constitution of all. And it is this day that we stand, under oath, and under God's command, and to protect and to defend the Constitution of America.
About his request, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Bergy?
Here.
Kristofferson?
Here.
Emmanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Klinkammer?
Here.
Lor?
Yeah.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
We are all here. Thank you and welcome to our Tuesday, March 24th Legislative Session of the Old Clare City Council. Mr. Peters, did you want to?
Thank you, Council President Weld. These are indeed extraordinary times and we are adapting with all of our essential functions, which, one of which, of course, is maintaining order in local government. And so today, we were actually one of the first organizations of local government that had a meeting scheduled to take place after the governor's orders were coming down. And just a couple of things to just update, you know, kind of where we're at in the meeting today and how we've tried to make this accessible and functional at the local level. So, as you know, following the governor's order, we did close down the city of all today to public access. It's important to note and be very clear that we closed it to public access for people to be able to come in the building does not mean that we closed your business. We are still functioning, we are still supplying and doing the essential tasks of local government, and we are continuously improving the ways in which people will contact us and be able to get their business done, whether that's online or by phone. We are working to increase that. So, as you know, last night, there was a public hearing that was scheduled to be held, and we were not able to put together quickly enough a technology that would allow for remote or access of the public to the meeting. So, both applicants that have public hearings last night agreed to postpone those until our April 13th and 14th meeting, at which time we hope that we're going to have technology that would allow remote access by the public to the meetings. So, today, the meeting is, we have council members that are calling in, which is authorized by the emergency order that you approved last Tuesday. And the transparency, or the way in which the public interacts with this meeting, or if not, I guess, interacts with watches, and the transparency of all the good work that we do at the local level, actually comes in several different ways. And this was broadcast out through a media release that we had earlier last afternoon. Certainly, the meeting can be watched on the basic cable channels of 96 and 97, the digital cable channels of 993 and 994, the digital TV Turner channels of 98-13 and 9814. It is also being livestreamed on Valley Media Works dot com, and it is also simulcast on WRMP 101.9. So, we're meeting the spirit and the letter of the law by having transparency in the actions that we're taking this morning. Council President Weld had talked a little bit about protocol and how we will be able to identify who is speaking and who is taking what action. And I don't know if you wanted to do that a little bit more right now, so that the public that's watching will know and have transparency on how the local government is functioning at this time of emergency. So, that perhaps I'll turn it back to Council Governor Weld, and you can review the protocol, which you want to use for how the citizens will be interacting and doing their business, etc.
Sure. Thank you, City Manager Peters. So, we have five council members that are joining us here in chambers, and we have five council members that are participating remotely. And those that are participating remotely, we've set up at least the order of which we would like for them to participate. My goal would be that as we address each item that's brought before us, that those that are participating remotely would be able to comment, ask questions first, before we start with comments and questions from those that are participating here in chamber. We've set up an order for them to comment, and again, asking for them to introduce themselves with each time that they do speak or comment to an agenda item. So, it'll start with Councilmember Emily Anderson, Councilmember Beaton, Council Vice President Emmanuel, Councilmember Gregert, and then Councilmember Worthman. And then from there, we'll work in the order that we have here for those that are in chamber. So, right now, everyone is here and present and participating. And with that, I don't know if Councilmember Peters, if you have any more in regards to the update, or?
Nothing more on the procedural matters of the meeting, other than I was corrected it's ValleyMediaWorks.org, not ValleyMediaWorks.com. Are you ready to proceed then?
I'll just have a few opening remarks, if that's okay. So, again, thank you, City Manager Peters. First, I want to thank our Health Director, Ms. Kegizi, our City Manager Peters, and all of the amazing staff, our emergency responders, our medical personnel, community partners and the residents of this city for their dedication and work to the spread, to stop the spread of COVID-19. Please, I encourage all of you to continue to respect and support the directives from our public officials. Over these past few weeks, there have been numerous changes and challenges in our lives and homes and in the world as we know it. But please know and believe that these changes and challenges will begin to diminish, and I'm certain little by little, our world, our cities and our neighborhoods will become revived and united again. This is why it is so important, as we work together to stop the spread of COVID-19, that we continue to plan for our future, all of us, as a community, business, family and as individuals. We must keep looking ahead and preparing for a new tomorrow. So, here we are today, planning and preparing for tomorrow, and with that, we will get started. During our legislative session this afternoon, the council members will either participate remotely or in person, deliberate and take action on agenda items before us today. City staff and council members have spent a great deal of time preparing for this meeting, and I have sincere appreciation for their continued work and dedication to this community. I also want to thank Valley Media Works and their devoted staff for livestreaming this meeting. To watch, please visit ValleyMediaWorks.org or visit Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. The first item on our agenda is the health update from City Manager Peters.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Wanted to take a few minutes and go through, just kind of provide an update of where we're at, what we've been doing to work with the community and to address this various, very serious situation with COVID-19. So, first and foremost, I think it's important to get the click to work. Okay. And that would be to say thank you for everybody that is pitching in to make this work. There is an outstanding amount of cooperation and collaboration that's happening at all levels of government, between local government agencies, between our partners in healthcare, between our other partners in the community, preparing for the COVID-19 and coming to Eau Claire as well as, you know, working together. So, it's a very impressive effort that is being put forward, and the level of cooperation is really impressive. The groundwork that has been laid for many, many years and the level of cooperation and collaboration that happens in this community is being leveraged to help the community through this very time. Just in terms of a little bit of an update, Ms. Kegizi is unable to be here today because she was doing her presentation at 3:30 that happens every afternoon, updating the community. I just, if you had not heard or you're aware, we are currently at five confirmed cases, and there have been 240 tests that have been conducted so far and 150 that are negative, and we have 86 cases or tests that are pending. These are low priority and are being analyzed. We have not been identified as a community where community spread is happening, and it is important to note that. We're not saying that that won't happen at some point in the future, and we have to be prepared for the possibility that it will happen in our community. But at this point in time today, we are not a community that has been identified with community spread. That said, that does not mean we should not be taking this seriously, and we need to take very seriously the governor's orders that have been presented related to social distancing and the number of people that can be together at any one place in time. The best way to get informed about the COVID-19 situation is to watch the 3:30 briefings that happen every day. They are livestreamed, and you can find them at the Health Department's website, it's a coronavirus.oeclairehealthdepartment.org. And at that website, you'll find all the information you need to be current and up to date with what's happening in our community, as well as you'll be able to watch livestreaming at 3:30 each day, the briefing, is what's happening. The briefings are expanding. They were primarily at the beginning mostly public health-related issues. We're now working more with other issues that are pertinent to the community and of interest to the community as we prepare for and respond to the COVID-19 crisis. In addition to the website and the 3:30 press briefings, we would encourage people to follow the Health Department's social media page, Facebook page, and also Twitter. Couple of things that have happened just in the last couple of days is a keep calm and stop the spread campaign, and I'll show you some of those posters later in my presentation. But it's a very intentional campaign that we're trying to spread in a good way. This is the good spread, not the bad spread of the disease, but the good spread of this campaign to encourage people to take very seriously the need to keep calm and also to stop the spread. As you know, today was a governor's order to stay at home, and I hope that people understand and recognize that the purpose of this is to reduce the number of people that will get sick all at one time, so we do not overwhelm our medical system. We are the primary medical care system for Northwest Wisconsin. The resources there are limited, but are prepared to respond, and it's important that as a community, we work together to try to stop the spread of this, so that we do not overwhelm the medical system. One of the things that's going to be coming on live tomorrow is the COVID-19 Call Center is going to be activated tomorrow morning at 8:30. The phone number for that is 715-831-7425. That's 715-831-4725, and it's going to operate seven days a week, on Monday through Friday. It will be 8:30 to 5:00, and on Saturdays from 9:00 to 4:00. This will be a call center that will be staffed with individuals that can provide answers and responses to people's questions related to COVID-19. So, in addition to the Facebook page, the 3:30 briefing, social media, Facebook and Twitter, Health Department's social media information, there's also a call center that's going to be available for people. Again, that's 715-831-7425, seven days a week, 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and 9:00 to 4:00 on Saturday and Sunday. It will be a staff call center where people can get information and that they may need to help respond to the COVID-19 crisis. In terms of just a general update of where we're at, I guess maybe I'll stop there because that, are there any questions related to kind of the status of the community and the COVID, the status of COVID-19 in the community at this point in time, or how and where to get good information?
Any questions from those participating remotely? Any questions from council here?
Thank you then. And now move on to just some updates of what we've been doing as a city of Eau Claire, and this is highly coordinated with the county and the city of Altoona. And starting tomorrow, there's actually going to be coordination that will be happening with all of the local municipalities in Eau Claire County. So, we're having a conference call tomorrow with the leadership of the townships and the villages, because we want this to be a community-wide effort and a coordinated effort between all levels of local government. This virus does not recognize or understand a political boundary between a village or a town or a city, and it's important that we have a coordinated effort with that. In fact, the 3:30 briefing today evolved around talking about Dun and Chiplo counties and how we're working together as a tri-county area. So, very coordinated response, a lot of communication that's happening. We'll spend a little bit of time talking about some things that are happening here in the city of Eau Claire. First off, the city of Eau Claire is an organization that's being very responsive and supportive of the incident command system that's in place. This is a formal command structure which expanded quite a bit last week, and when you expand the command system for a disaster or an emergency like this, it takes a lot of people. And so, there are people that are being brought in from a wide variety of organizations. Again, you know, the lines between different organizations are dropping. We have, if they were even ever there, we have retirees that are coming in to help out, the university staff that's helping out, there's a wide variety of organizations of different medical communities. So, lots of different individuals from a wide variety of organizations are stepping up to the plate and fulfilling roles within the incident command system. That essentially means that, you know, a person who might not normally be in any kind of a command structure or organizational structure within the Health Department is now assisting by doing some very specific assigned set of tasks to help with the overall event, and it's very coordinated with the daily meetings and updates and objectives and that are being set every operational period in order to be able to respond to the event. So, very impressive incident command structure that the community for decades has trained to be able to implement. This is the first time it's ever been expanded to the level that it's being used right now, even though we use it in fire responses and police responses and flood responses. This is going to be the biggest ICS structure that we've ever put in place, and the community is stepping up to the plate and helping with the resources to make that happen. In terms of priorities, the decisions that are being made within the city of Eau Claire, we have two priorities. One is to protect our employees and keep them safe as we respond to having the essential services be provided, and two, that we are committed to the continuity of those essential services. So, all decisions that we're making are running through that, those two lenses. One, protect our employees, and two, how do we continue the essential services to our community? And there's, believe me, there's an awful lot of decisions that are being made at a wide variety of levels within the organization through those two priorities in order to keep our employees safe and keep continuity of our essential services. We talked a little bit about the City Hall status, and again, I would want to emphasize, even though walk-in service is not available at the City Hall facility, the services do continue. And quite frankly, we have seen a big reduction in the number of people that were wanting to come down and visit us anyway over the last week, and so we have not had a whole lot of foot traffic here. But we're working very hard to make sure that people know that the services are still continuing and how to reach and access those services and receive the services that they need from their local government. Elections update. So, going back to those priorities of keeping our employees safe, you know, last week with people who were walking in to provide needed service, either because they needed to register, and registration is something that many times is done face-to-face, and then also people who wanted assistance with their absentee votes. We started having conversations about how we wanted to protect our employees, and this weekend, that those efforts generated a project and an effort that I think as a local government we've been very proud of. And Carrie, our Carrie Riepel, our city clerk, was on the front lines of creating what we now have happening, which is a drive-through election update. And Carrie, perhaps you'd like to tell us a little bit about that?
So, we processed about 175 people through the drive-through in-person voting today. The voter comes in, they roll their window down a little bit, they communicate with the poll worker, they show their, they hold their photo IDs up, we write their name and address down, we run to the elections office, we get their ballots, we bring it back out on a clipboard and hand it through them, to them through the window, where they then take the clipboard, they fill out their ballots, and then on the way out, they hand that clipboard back to our people. So, the only point of contact really is with the voter is when they're handing that clipboard back to us. And then we are sanitizing every clipboard, pen, blue stick, everything in between each use. So far, voters seem to be happy with this process. We have processed about 5,000 by mail ballots and about 1,000 in-person voters over the last week, and I would guess we have at least another 3,000 mail ballots to process as of right now. That number just keeps growing, but so far, so good. Any questions?
Any question from those joining us remotely? Any council questions from council here? No? Thank you. A great idea.
I'd certainly commend Carrie and Jay and some other folks that spent all day Sunday figuring out how to make that happen. If you get a chance to watch it, it looks an awful lot like a pulverge, because you pull up, you get what you need, and you pull into a stall, and they all, basically all queue up, they do their paperwork, and then they drive off, you know, and they can't leave until they hand their materials back, and then as Carrie said, it's all being disinfected before it goes back to the next person. So, an incredibly ingenious and flexible and adaptive approach to voting, we think is probably one of the more creative approaches that's happening within the state right now, and it's happening in your City Hall parking lot as we speak. So, I would emphasize to those who are listening to the, watching the meeting, that our first preference is that you do absentee voting. You can get an absentee ballot by going to myvote.wisconsin.gov, correct, and request an absentee ballot, and as Ms. Riepel said, we've processed over 5,000 of those. That request comes in by email, we then send out the ballot, you have to return it, it has to be here by 5:00 on?
April 7th, on Election Day.
So, on Election Day. Yep. And the last time you can request an absentee ballot is April 2nd.
2nd.
Yep, so April 2nd is the last day that you can request an absentee ballot, and, but it has to be received by the, by the city clerk on April 7th. So, anyway, so some really nice and ingenuative and creative and hard work by a lot of people. And if you do see the people that are out there, you will recognize many faces in City Hall that have really no responsibility or work with elections, but they're out there invested in making this happen. So, great team effort across a lot of departments to make that happen. The next update that I would have, any questions on that?
Questions from? Thank you.
Then in terms of transit, we are continuing the transit service. On Friday, we made adjustments to the layout of the bus to minimize the contact that the passengers would have with the driver. The passengers are, if physically able, to enter the back of the bus. We have waived the fees, and we've blocked off the seats in such a way that the only seats you can sit in are ones that are, have social distancing between the others. We feel this is important, especially with the governor's order, which still allows people to travel for medicine and medical appointments and food, and for the people in our community that do not have the ability to have transportation available to them and public transportation is their only means. We feel, again, this is a way through that lens to protect our employees and still continue the essential service. So, everything we're doing is through those two lens, two lenses, and that certainly implies, again, the creative work that's being done in the Transit Authority to continue that essential service in a way that is still safe for our employees. In terms of continuation of operations, just to emphasize that we're doing everything we can to have operations be still functional, and of course, there are disruptions when you have people that are going home. We have probably close to 200 people now that are working from home as they can, but we're also working hard to have those operations still continue. From a personal policies perspective, we have updated and adjusted our work from home policy, we've adjusted work schedules, we've done reassignments and flexibility, we've refined and redefined some of our leave policies as well as our travel policy. I would say we're not done with that, there's still more that we're working on. What I can tell you is that to the best of my knowledge, every one of our employees has been able to address their childcare needs while still being able to provide service to the city of Eau Claire, and we have, that all of our employees, including temporary employees who would have expected to be working at this time on a regular basis, have work that is meaningful work and contributing to helping the organization move forward. Some of that are real small examples of what you're seeing in the parking lot. People are doing things that may, you know, all job descriptions have this line, "other duties as assigned." We're doing a lot of that, there's a lot of "other duties as assigned" to keep things going. We're working hard to have messages to our employees that they need to protect themselves, stay home if they're sick, wash their hands. We're doing some reeducation on coughing and seething etiquette, our cleaning and disinfecting. Certainly, several of our employees are working very hard at that, and others that may not have been doing that before are. So, all of our facilities, including City Hall, because even though every employee who can work from home is, it does mean that there are some tasks, there are some functions, there are some things that have to happen here. So, we do have employees that are coming and going on a very limited basis to the building for things that just have to still happen. Consequently, we are cleaning the building multiple times a day in all surfaces so that the building can clean, remain safe where those employees still have to be here. Same is true of the Police Department, which is a 24-operation, and so we have dedicated extra staff to be cleaning the lockers and all the areas within the Police Department, our Fire Department, our fire stations, as well as some of our public works facilities. So, a lot of work going into a much more frequent and in-depth cleaning and disinfecting of all of our public buildings. And then we've talked about the council meetings, and it is our hope that for the meeting in April, the April 13th and 14th meeting, that we will have technology in place that will allow not only for the remote access of the council members, but that there can be remote access to the public for those portions of the VA that they called for public input. So, with that, I guess I would just ask if there were any questions on kind of this general update, and then I'll just very quickly maybe go do a highlight on a couple of the things that the departments are doing, and then I want to show you a few of the posters or signs that we've been using.
Any questions for City Manager Peters from those participating remotely?
Catherine Emmanuel has a question.
Go ahead, Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for the update. I appreciate just all of the cylinders that are going truly around the book clock. It's remarkable what the city is doing, and I appreciate that very much. I'm wondering about if there will be official, I guess, interpretation around the Families' First Coronavirus Response Act and how the city is interpreting that, especially around our part-time and limited-term employees. I know you talked a little bit about some of the operations so far, and I think all local governments are trying to interpret what this means, and so I would be local governments are trying to interpret what this means, and so I would be curious about when council may receive an opinion on how the city will be interpreting that.
Yeah. Thank you for that question. So, as, as some of you may aware, there was federal legislation that was passed. It does not go into effect until April. We have actually a group of folks, HR and legal people, that are interpreting that and trying to put an understanding of what that, what that means and the impact that it has on our, on our current policies. And then also, we're looking at it in terms of, you know, other units of local government. So, at this point, I don't know exactly when we'll have an interpretation of that, but we, we're working on that, and, you know, we will be able to, when we're done with that, we'll be able to provide the interpretation. There's, there's a lot of nuances to it, a lot, you know, there's a lot that's being, you know, studied to try to understand what it means, what it doesn't mean, and then, you know, what does that mean for us as an organization, and how does it impact, if it does, in, you know, any of our, of our policies and procedures? So, at this point, it's too early for me to be able to comment on what it means, and really, all I can say is we're, we're digesting it and trying to figure it out as quickly as we can, and once we have made our, our policy interpretations on that, we can certainly inform council.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from those participating remotely? Any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you. Then just real quickly, just a couple of highlights of what the different departments are doing. Certainly, the administration or city manager's office worked with the emergency declaration and is providing some legal interpretation advice and leadership to the incident command structure. We have a dedicated attorney, you know, just to the incident command system, and, you know, working with the public communication and the social media updates, as well as helping us work through these alternate, the alternate ways of doing elections, as well as your city council meetings. So, a lot of legal implications for all of this, and the legal team is, is front and center, making sure that we can protect our employees and provide our services that do it in a legal way. Finance has figured out how we can process our payroll remotely, that we can get a lot of our resources and financial functions online, and just some simple things like mail and delivery. HR is developing and implementing, again, these procedures related to remote work and travel, and educating our employees, we've been relaxing our leave policies, and also analyzing that federal legislation that has come down. Community Development is working with our online, later this week, we're going to have e-inspections, so we're going to be able to do building inspections online for many, if not most, of our inspections, our building inspections. And so, we're excited about that as a, as a service to our building community. Engineering has been very involved with parking permits and approaching and mapping, the different things that are happening with the drive-up clinics around the, around the city, getting the parking lot freed up for mayos that do that, with the curbside parking that needed to be done for restaurant pickups, they have upped their, their cleaning and sterilization of the maps, and actually quite a bit is being done to make sure that the traffic signals in our GIS operations stay current and in support of the emergency response. Community Services is keeping our water safe, and I just, we want to emphasize again, the water is safe. The coronavirus is not in the water, it will not get in the water, the water is disinfected, and we have multiple systems to keep the water system working and operating through the event. We are continuing to sweep our streets as an important function that we do to protect our waterway. We've had some questions about odd-even parking, and as soon as we're done sweeping the streets, we will be lifting the odd-even parking, and we're trying to get those done as quickly as we can. As I mentioned before, the bus system is continuing to operate. Our custodial team is working very hard to clean and disinfect City Hall, the central maintenance, the library. We're also doing quite a bit of work with our vehicles, and the vehicles that, so for example, police officers, you know, they, with shifts, they change police, you know, and so cleaning the vehicles in between police officer shifts. The bus riding, again, the rules that we've put in place to protect the drivers and the riders, and the community services that assist in the election team, not only with the true voting, but we're training quite a few employees in the community services to be able to actually serve as poll workers on Election Day. A lot of cross-training happening. Police Department's taking precautionary measures to protect our employees, outfitting with the PEE, PPE, and we're working on our procedures to still do appropriate policing, but while we're protecting the police officers from possible, you know, infection, you know, when they have contact with the public. And we're teaching and working with our dispatchers on how they can screen calls and appropriately dispatch the calls when they come in related to the coronavirus. In the Fire Department, we've hired 10 temporary employees from the tech school. These are students who, whose program got put online, but they are EMTs, or, yeah, they're EMT basics in addition to firefighters, and they'll be backfilling and helping our paramedics as we respond to this. And the Fire Department is, of course, ramping up with their supplies and training for how to react to the COVID-19. The library is also in play here, expanding their online and remote services. They've added over 400 new overdrive ebooks and audio. They've enhanced their database for business, investing, and personal use. They're working with Volume One for some virtual events, and they're providing remote reference desk services and remote calls to the, to their social library. So, that's just a few of the things, you know, the many things that are happening within departments. And before I go to the last part of the presentation, I would certainly be open to any questions that I have about what we're doing within any one department.
Any questions from council members that are participating remotely? Any questions from council here in chamber? No? Thank you for all the information and all the great work and your staff.
Then, thank you. Just real quickly, there's a series of, you know, I'll just go through here, the signs that we're putting up. This is, for example, the sign that's on the door for anybody who wants to walk up or does walk up to City Hall, and that, you know, we're emphasizing we're still open to business and how people can contact us for business. The, there's absentee voting and the driving-through, drive-through instructions. This is one of, a couple of the posters related to the Keep Calm and Carry On. We'd be happy, I believe that these were sent to you in email, particularly this Keep Calm and Stop the Spread. Please, please put those out everywhere you can, put them on your Facebook pages, share them, and, you know, spread those around. So, the, this Keep Calm and Stop the Spread campaign is something we'd really like to saturate the community with, and you have those in your email, and feel free to distribute those as you feel appropriate. In terms of the police departments, again, they're working very hard with Next Door and getting some messaging out. There's some other messaging there with the, with the Health Department. We do have the outdoors is open, and we're trying to encourage people to go outdoors, although today, we did make the decision that we're going to close the playgrounds. And so, we don't have this, the, maybe I think I did, I think I do have the sign on that, but the, the playgrounds are temporary close because of the possibility that the virus could be on the playground with them. But we do want people to get outside, we think that's important. There's already good for social distancing, it's good for your mental health, it's good for your physical health, and encouraging people to get outside. There's just the sign for planning and development, another thing for social distancing. Here's the notice for the playgrounds that are temporary closed and encouraging people to practice good health. And then even internally for our employees, we've got these plastered up around, encouraging people, if you're, even if you have to come in for an essential function, if you're not feeling well, go home, and we'll, we'll miss you, we'll figure out how to, how to get there with them. So, I appreciate your patience, I appreciate your support, I appreciate the, the information that you're able to share to help the community to stay calm and stop the spread. And at this point, I would answer any final questions that you might have on kind of where we're at and what we're doing to respond to the COVID-19 crisis.
Thank you. Any questions from council members participating remotely? Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Council President. I just had a couple clarifying questions about the playgrounds being closed. I was wondering if this includes dog parks and then, like, open areas, like Carson Park?
Yeah. You know, it does not include the open areas, like, we're encouraging people to use the open areas, and we're encouraging people to still use the dog parks. We are trying to put some measures in there to be able to open or close the fences, you know, without having to touch the handle, so we're looking at some creative ways to do that. But we do encourage people to get out with their dog and get out to walk, just keep the six feet of spatial, of social distancing between one another. But yeah, get out with your dog, get out in the open spaces. But we, we were recommending that you don't have your children playing on, you know, the stainless steel. The virus, as I understand it, you know, can sustain itself reasonably well on plastic and stainless steel and playground equipment, and that's what playground equipment is made of, so.
Any other questions? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President. So, just take me one step further on the playground equipment. How is it blocked off? Is it roped off? Is there just a sign there?
So, we will have the sign, and we're also blocking it off, you know, with tape, if we're wrapping around it to, to discourage people to do that. I don't know that we'll actually put stonements or something, but we're going to put, you know, some tape around. Should be pretty obvious for a parent that's going up there, and then the sign will explain, the sign that I showed will explain what, why, why that's, why we're saying that we should use the playground equipment.
Any other questions from council? CD, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Wells.
Thanks.
Council President Wells.
The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. You should have that before you. Do council members have any questions regarding the consent agenda or wish to remove any item for separate consideration? Councilmember Bergy.
Do you want to ask it? The people online first?
Sure. Those participating remotely, do you have any questions or wish to remove any item for separate consideration? Any? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you. I just had a question. I doubt the applicant's here, but can I ask it without pulling it? It was, it's about the...
Certainly.
Okay. So, I, I don't know who can answer, but my question, I had a call, phone call from constituent wondering about with the Eau Claire marathon, when it's moved, if they could, they're wondering about the fees being refunded, and I thought if the applicant were here, I could ask that, but I don't know if they couldn't make the new dates. So, that's the question, relayed from a constituent.
Mr. Peppinger. Good afternoon.
The answer is no, because they are just rescheduling the date, so the fees are intact as far as what they would be normally.
Can I, so if a, so if a runner signed up and can't make it, the new dates, they, they don't get a refund?
Okay, I was, I was thinking you were talking about the special events permit.
Sorry.
In regards to that, that is a question for the applicant. They're not here, but my guess is that they, they wanted the timeframe now to plan so it would give the runners the opportunity to make that decision.
Okay.
I don't want to answer the question, but my guess is that they would refund that, but I don't want to answer.
I know. Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Peppinger in regards to this matter? No? Thank you. Any other questions regarding the consent agenda or any items that you wish to remove for separate consideration? And on a motion by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Beaton, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Saying none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And the consent agenda is passed unanimously. There are no proclamations today, and we will proceed then to our business agenda, beginning with agenda item number 13, which is a resolution authorizing Downtown Eau Claire Inc. to conduct the Eau Claire's Festival in downtown Eau Claire on Friday and Saturday, July 10th and 11th, 2020. Mr. Peppinger.
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
The special event application before you is a new event. The Eau Claire's Festival is a new music, exciting food initiatives. It's about new music, exciting food initiatives, craft beer, and art. This event will occur on Friday and Saturday, July 10th and the 11th, from 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., midnight. It will take place on Graham Avenue, Eau Claire Street, and Gibson Streets. The main music event will take place on a private lot located at 202 and 206 Graham Avenue, and I believe we have a map to show the location of, I'm just going to talk along with the map I have. So, if you look at, at the map, it does show the streets that will be closed down, Eau Claire Street from Barcel Street to Graham Avenue, Graham Avenue from Eau Claire Street to East Grand Avenue, and then Gibson Street from Barcel Street to the dead-end area of Graham Avenue, or Graham Avenue, which is that loading dock area that is situated by the potter center. The lot where the, the main music festival will be going is that lot just to the west of Graham Avenue, right where the pointer, or pointer is going to go over a little bit to this, to the area to the west. You can see the two red areas on the map, that those are the stages. There are several other amenities that there will have, food, some merchandise that's going to be sold. They also have a, their beer and wine will be sold, sold, watered. Then there are some areas where certainly because of the size of the event, will have a significant amount of port bars in the area, and that was something that was gone through with the Special Events Committee. This event will require a city council approval due to the expectation of more than 1,000 spectators selling or distributing six or more kegs of fermented foam beverages or wine, alcohol served after sunset over 8:00 p.m., and the event closing down the city streets. There have been many questions regarding this event just recently, and I thought it would be beneficial to go over that because we don't have the applicant here, but I have asked the applicant to answer several of the questions that have come forth, and I believe you've been carbon copying and connecting to an email that was sent out a few days ago today. So, one of the questions that came up is how many other events of 5,000 to 6,000 have been held in downtown in the past? We've held several so far. The International Fall Festival estimates 5,000 to 10,000 people that are, that come to that event. The Jazz Festival is about 4,000 people. The Oxbow held about 2,000, but that was typically in the night when we had Sounds Like Summer going on, so if you were downtown during any of those times, there were well over 2,000 people in downtown area. And then, Sounds Like Summer itself averages about 1,500 per week, or over 20,000 for the summer. Another question that came up was what other locations did the applicant consider? We've been working with this applicant since August of last year. The initial ask when they came in is that they wanted to use Carson Park along with many of the downtown streets to allow drinking within the street, very similar to how Oxbow is operated. Through the process with our Special Events Committee, we've got it down to where we feel that it's more manageable for us. And you can see on the map, there are those blue areas, those are private businesses, the Lizmore, the Pizza Plus, the Firehouse, and all those areas are going to be part of this event that will have some type of music venue going on, but again, we'll be utilizing those spaces for the event. Part of those streets will be closed down, but it will not be allowed to have open containers of drinking in the streets, it will just be closed down to have an access to where they can get from those venues. over to the main stage of the private lot that's located off of Graham Avenue. So, talking about what other locations were considered, we had quite a few. I mean, they, they started out with a very broad base where they wanted to, to have us because in the past, they've had this all at the Country Jam grounds a lot of impressive happening. So they wanted to bring this downtown. That was part of their vision. So we've worked with them to try to do that, certainly not to the point of where it started at, but to a point where we felt with the Special Events Committee that this would work for the city. Another question is how is the police department, the fire department reacting to this application? Again, as you can see with, as I talked about, it was a much different event when we started this process back in August. It is now to a point that we feel that the Special Events Committee, along with the fire department, police department, that this can be managed very well for us. And then what are some of the conditional requirements that we're, that we're up here for this? Certainly, we looked at, uh, in each one of these areas that we're looking at, some of the, the private, uh, fires and, and spaces. We got an occupancy issue, and that's something that is part of the, the, uh, special events process. So the requirements of that, plus our noise ordinance, the alcohol permit required, and some of the requirements around the space that is going to be used for the main music area. The, the policy requirements that we have intact are going to still apply, that they, we make sure that they have wristbands, that they have bartenders, and that we're, we're still following our special events, uh, requirements for this, for this event. There were some other questions that, that were also posed that I'd like to just go over quickly here. One of the questions was the Pablo Center holds two major tenants and serves as offices for two additional businesses. How will Visit Eau Claire offices and Visit Eau Claire Experience Center, UW Eau Claire Theater Department, and the Eau Claire Chamber Orchestra be impacted by this event? Again, uh, this group has reached out and Therese Parshall from the Pablo, uh, group is actually working with them, so they're actually teamed up. And I've asked her to give some response to that. Visit Eau Claire is looking to be a partner with the check-in services. Pablo Center currently does not have any shows during the timeframe, and that was one of the concerns of this festival weekend. But the festival is downtown and hope they will allow room tax to increase with, with, which supports Visit Eau Claire. Also, in regards to the university, because this is in July, it's on a Friday, Saturday, typically they're not going to have any classes that will be impacted at all. Uh, good with that. Another question, what exact times are the street closures? I mentioned that earlier. It's gonna be from 4:00 PM to 12:00 midnight on Friday and Saturday. The barricades will not be removed without feedback from the police department. So we'll make sure that, you know, we're not gonna have the street full of people before we remove those barricades and have track that we went through. Once that is okay by the PD, then the barricades will be taken down. And again, a question came up on utilizing 202 Graham Avenue lot. Uh, again, I mentioned before, this is a private lot, but it's, it's, uh, uh, feedback that I got from Therese is that the lot needs currently be permitted out and looking for the feasibility while parking services downtown. So in the packet, there's a list of parking areas that, that they have to identify and will identify for anybody that's coming to the event to utilize those parking spaces and those parking spots for that weekend. One of the, uh, other questions is will the impact of these private businesses just be for the days of the festival? And is it expected that these private businesses may be impacted during the setup and strike of the event? And how many days? So in regards to how many days it's just going to be for that Friday, Saturday, until 10:00 PM? Uh, the festival is looking to have a positive impact to downtown businesses in bringing attendees to the area. The setup would only be on, on the Gibson lot. It is now slated to have setup of stages to be three days prior to the event. The Gibson Street closures are only needed for Friday and Saturday from 4:00 PM to midnight. They should not impact any daytime parking or operational deliveries. Uh, question, the current plan does not seem to account for heavy equipment storage anywhere. How and where will the heavy equipment be stored? The, the equipment is coming in from a third-party company. Once the festival is over, they will come back to pick up. The festival currently has storage units and shipping containers. Uh, where their old equipment is currently stored, storage facilities in country traffic locations, so it won't be downtown. Uh, what are the current restroom provisions for the festival as planned for the 202 Graham Avenue? I, I touched on that just briefly, but there will be around 80 to 100 portages delivered on Friday. It will be serviced Saturday for the festival, tenets Saturday night. They will be located in the designated areas with hand washing stations. And you can see that on the map through the, if they plan on having that location. How does the festival requested use Pablo Center tie to the outdoor locations? The Pablo Center stage will be used for residency of the artists to collaborate on their pieces prior to the festival time, Friday and Saturday. The Pablo Center will have a separate ticketing night event with specific artists. Much of what they're doing in these other venues is that they will be selling, uh, tickets online. So they will know when they get to occupancy, that they will cut that off so they won't sell any more tickets to those areas. So people will be directed to a certain, uh, yes, and it's an app. I'm not all that keen on that stuff, but if, if they would go on an app, sign up for it, they would go there and they would have a, an invite on their, on their phone. And then the last question is what is, is the planned impact to the public bike trail along the river that serves as the primary connector to Haymarket Landing and Graham Avenue pedestrian bridge? The festival will look at not impacting the bike trail along the river. They are requesting fencing from the city and will make sure that the bike trail stays open. And nobody will be impacted on that in regards to insurance. So with that, the Special Events Committee recommended approval of this event at our March 11th meeting. I had, we had planned for Therese to be here to answer questions, but I, I did that through this. I would be happy to answer any questions like that.
Councilmembers participating remotely have any questions?
I, I have a question. I have a few questions. Uh, this is Kate Beaton. Um, I, uh, I guess my question seems like an obvious one. Um, I, I know a lot of these decisions from the, um, from the Special Events Committee and also from the biz, uh, the South, South Barstow Business Improvement District, these decisions have been made before. Um, uh, a lot of our community changed, uh, through the COVID-19. And I'm wondering if, uh, a conversation has been had with the applicants and with the business owners and, uh, with the Pablo and basically everybody involved, which I think seems like a lot of people, about a contingency plan over, uh, how this is gonna be impacted. Uh, I, I have some concerns, um, that, you know, the event organizers are, are from, I believe from Ireland, um, and obviously not able to travel right now. Um, they're, they were, they were scheduled to be, uh, in Eau Claire to address a lot of these questions and work with our local business owners to, um, figure out, you know, plans for how this is gonna work best for everybody. And that's not happened, um, certainly not to their fault, but just because of, um, of restricted travel due to COVID-19. And so I think that I'm concerned about, um, you know, that this theme may continue to pop up as this festival is gonna be planned. And, um, you know, a festival of this size in our, in our downtown with so many streets closed are, isn't, is unprecedented. And I just wonder if, if it's, uh, possible to be planning such an unprecedented event during an unprecedented time in our community.
Mr. Pipinger.
Sure. Pointly understand that, uh, we felt because we're looking out into July, certainly you've been notified that we have either canceled, uh, special events or we have rescheduled several. We, we had, uh, one, you know, contingent agenda, uh, just earlier today. That, that way, that may happen. I, I can't tell what the future will bring, but, um, our God said it's, it's far enough that we have time if, if in fact we have to reschedule it or postpone it. Um, we have time to work with the, uh, with the applicant.
Any other questions from councilmember, councilmember Beaton? Did you have a follow-up?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I do. Um, thank you. Um, so I, I think that, um, that, that all sounds good. Um, I think it might be prudent to be really intentional about that backup plan and, and be really planning for the, the real possibilities that this would need to be canceled. Um, I, I wonder in terms of the time that we have, uh, Mr. Pipinger, if, um, if you think, if you think it's, uh, if you think we have the time to postpone this decision until some of the, uh, businesses have, have a bit of time to get their feet under them? And also until the event organizers have the time to be able to do the due diligence that they really planned, uh, and that they promised our local businesses? Um, and, and postpone until a time when we can, um, can do that due diligence and, and be really intentional about the planning of this event?
Mr. Pipinger.
If you're asking if we have time, certainly we have time. That decision will be up to the council, uh, if you, if you feel we should postpone. But, uh, we have time. We also have time if, uh, it's approved tonight to look at, at adjusting if, uh, the, the current situation would stand up beyond where, you know, we're hoping that it will.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from councilmembers participating remotely?
This is Catherine Emmanuel. Go ahead, Jeremy, go ahead. Thank you. Um, yeah, this is Jeremy Gregert. Um, I guess I had a question about the site itself, that what is being called the Schaefer Lot. I understand that it only recently has been kind of graded into more of a, kind of a gravel parking lot. And I guess I'm not familiar with exactly the, you know, the condition of the, of the lot. And I guess my question is, is it, is it gonna be changed or graded differently? And has the safety of the, the site really been confirmed? Um, given the, the fact that there used to be a building on part of it and it's been kind of a, it's kind of an uneven ground area? That's my question.
Mr. Pipinger.
Sure. It is a gravel lot. We, because it is private property, we're not, it doesn't really fall under our special events portion because it is private, it's not in a, in a park. But I, I would say that as an organizer, they're, they're still required to have insurance and that insurance would cover any, uh, issue that might happen. But I can't really answer, you know, we haven't gone out there to inspect that private lot.
Councilmember Gregert, did you have a follow-up or?
Well, I have for now. Thank you, uh, Council President Welb.
And you have, Council Vice President Emmanuel, did you have a question?
Uh, thank, thank you so much. Yes, my question has to do with the correspondence that we received from the South Barstow bid. And I'm wondering if staff has had a chance to render an opinion about, um, basically their position that, as I understand it, um, very supportive in concept of the event, very enthusiastic about Eau Claire Festival. Just, um, seems like they're looking to have additional conversation with the applicant before the South Barstow bid can offer their full support. So I'm wondering if, while the South Barstow bid didn't come directly out and ask for this to be postponed, um, I think there might be a little, I, I'm interpreting a little subtext there that, that would be ideal. Um, does staff have an opinion about any concerns if this was approved tonight um, without, um, additional time for the bid? Or, um, does staff have confidence that all of the details are being worked out and that could still be facilitated administratively if council approves this tonight? Thank you.
Sure. Whenever we meet with applicants that would have an event downtown, we, we encourage each and every applicant to work with the bids, work with the businesses that are downtown that are potentially impacted. And, and I believe they did send out a letter to the groups. And I know with, uh, with the downtown South Barstow District bid, they, they did give a, uh, I guess unconditional support of the event. Our hope is that when we, when we ask for it, is that we've always, you know, we have this all in order with, but again, that's not our job to really, the applicants' job to make sure that they give that information also to the businesses and can work with that. In regards to how the city, uh, feels with the event, we feel, you know, the, the Special Events Committee recommended approval of this because we feel, um, it, it meets, uh, all the requirements for a special event. And we've had them downtown before. I've mentioned that this has changed dramatically from what it was originally proposed to us. And this is something that we worked with, uh, with the applicant to get to a point where we're comfortable with it. Again, that would be city councils' prerogative if you wanna postpone it and have the, the applicant work with the bids and the businesses to get that before you postpone.
May I have a follow-up, please?
Certainly.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I appreciate that very much, Mr. Pipinger, and, um, understand the precarious nature even of the conversation has. So I appreciate all of the roles that we play. I'm wondering if, um, either you or maybe the city manager can render an opinion if, uh, if council does approve this this evening, that we provide a stipulation that the applicant continues to work with the bid, which I'm, I'd put money on that that's everybody's spirit and intent. But maybe that would give peace of mind to the bid if we put that in as a stipulation.
Mr. Peters or Mr. Pipinger?
I guess we'd look for a little clarification of what that means in terms of, um, success. So, but, but, um, because it certainly is the intent of, of staff and I'm sure the applicant to, uh, to work with the bids. The definition of work and, um, could be challenging, I guess. I guess we'd look for a little, a little more clarification on, on what you're looking for.
Okay, thank you. I, I think I can just let the question sit for now. Um, other councilmembers may ask, and as we have dialogue, we may, um, bring this back up for consideration. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from councilmembers participating remotely?
This is Councilmember Gregert again at the right.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Council President. I guess my question is specifically to the food trucks. Um, is there an estimate on how many there would be? And also how the noise of, from the food trucks would be mitigated if any generators are used? And I guess part of that question is, is there a way for them not to use generators and, and be hooked up to electricity, um, at a nearby building? I guess, I was wondering what the plan is with that.
I guess I was wondering what the plan is with that.
Mr. Pipinger.
I guess I'm going to have to look that up. I'm not quite sure. I know they're going to have food trucks. Typically, if we have the electricity there, we prefer them to hook up to the spider boxes because of, you know, the generators running. But that was all reviewed by the Health Department and approved in accordance to their, during the Special Events Committee. But I could get that information to you as far as how many they're looking at. All that they had in there is that they wanted to have food trucks, and that's what was approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pipinger.
Any other?
This is Andrew Worthman.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I wanted to ask, Mr. Pipinger, is it, you know, a two-week postponement doesn't seem like it would quite be enough. I'm wondering if there's any issue if we were to do a postponement till, for a month, to make sure that all the different businesses and interests have had a chance to become comfortable with this proposal. Is that still feasible if we wanted to do a month postponement?
Mr. Pipinger.
I would really have to ask the applicant, because I'm sure that they are in a position that they want to get marketing this event. I believe I've seen some marketing already happening at the volume in regards to this. That's not atypical. It happens many times before councils approve an event. But I would have to ask the applicant if that was, it looks like we have, I've just been reminded, it's, we do have that one week vacation this time, so the next council meeting is three weeks rather than two weeks. So it would go beyond the two weeks.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions from those participating remotely? Any questions from council here in chamber? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. Mr. Pipinger, I have, from our experience down in the Chateau neighborhood and the festivals that have happened down there, there's, my question would be specifically in the packet it talks about their, was it tuning the sound system so that there wasn't a lot of unnecessary noise pollution? My question is, how does that, how is that manageable when you're right on the river like that? Doesn't it just flow down the, doesn't the sound just kind of travel down the open space?
If you look at where the stages are, they're actually pointed away from the river. So the noise is actually going to be directed towards Graham Avenue, and it bounces off those buildings and come back. I'm not a noise expert, but I know many times you can hear that beat on that, and, you know, they still have to comply with those ordinance. So if there's a complaint, I mean, that's something that will be dealt with.
Thank you for that response. Could you just elaborate a little bit? Are you suggesting that this first experience would then let us know for next time how much, you know, how much it moves out into the neighborhoods? Or are you saying that people will be calling the police and saying it's too noisy?
What, we do learn from many special events if there are problems. And so the next year that we come up, if the group, and we remind applicants when they come to, especially if they're having music, that if it gets too loud, there are complaints likely that the following year, we may have issues and council may have issues because many times you're getting the calls and you're relating back to us and we have to deal with the applicant on that. So many times, that's what happens. And certainly if it's a group that wants to continue to have a special event downtown, they're going to adhere by the ordinance that we have in place.
Thank you. I have other questions, but I'll let this go around.
Certainly. Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two questions, actually. One is on the map that's on the screen right now. According to the legend that is not showing, the red dotted line describes the boundaries of this thing. And I see it's all around Barstow on the 1 and 200 block. I mean, is that, I just want to make sure that Barstow is not going to be blocked off.
No, that was the original map that they, we had changed out. Again, as I mentioned, we had several meetings with the group, and it had went from, in fact, part of their venues that they were going to use was using the Four Corners Lot, parking lot, as another venue for an open music area. And that was removed from the plan. So, as I mentioned, the plan was very large at one time, and it has gotten down to where we feel is acceptable. So the streets that I had mentioned, Eau Claire Street, Graham Avenue, and Gibson Street are the streets that are being requested to be postponed.
Mr. Pipinger, the other question is, I see the copy of the letter that they were sending to the residents and businesses in the South Barstow. It's referenced in another place, but there's nothing in here about what response they got to those letters that I could find.
Yes, and that wasn't included in the packet. We requested them to go up to the community, that that wasn't something that we got. I believe in some cases, they got a response back. I'm not certain they got it from everybody who received the letter that came back from the South Barstow bid. You know, and conditionally, they supported with some conditions, but certainly it wasn't a complaint.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council here in chamber? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Worthman. Thank you, President Weld. I have a long memory, you're losing my, yeah, I am, right, it was a joke. It was a joke. Automobile traffic is my other question. There was a lot of discussion in the packet, and I thought that there was a lot of information provided, but I'd like to hear more, I would like to have some, just hear you talk about how are people going to be all leaving at the same time when they've talked about the downtown having high-volume events, but not when they all close at the same time? So what is our strategy for getting people out of downtown?
Again, in the packet, there was a list of parking areas for companies. A part of our Special Events Committee was that we have the traffic engineer on our committee, and she looks at all of what potentially could come into these areas and whether it would be any additional traffic control at intersections, whether we are going to use a police officer. It's very similar to when we have the July and Fourth celebration in Carson Park, when we let people on, direct people on towards Longview Street and Carson Park Drive. In this area, the likelihood is that the traffic will be able to disperse because there's so many other options to get out rather than just one. There's many options to leave the area. So in this case, there isn't any other, I mean, certainly, we're going to have police, the police will be present down in this downtown area at midnight when this is letting out. But right now, we feel that the traffic will be able to disperse without having any significant traffic control in the place.
Any other questions from councilmembers here in chamber? Any questions from those participating remotely? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Pipinger. On a motion then by Council Vice President Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Gregor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? We'll start with those that are participating remotely.
Yeah, I guess I'll start. So I, I'm really concerned about the letter that we received by Erin Clast, the president of the South Barstow bid. I had a chance to speak with Erin on the phone earlier today, and she explained to me that the letter that was included in our packet, it does say that their support is, they're excited about the event, but their support is not unconditional. It was conditional on the fact, on the event organizers coming to Eau Claire and working with the business owners and answering some of their really big questions about how this festival would impact their businesses. And so, you know, because that hasn't happened, it was my interpretation that we don't have the support of the South Barstow Business Improvement District. Erin had said that, you know, a lot of other businesses have expressed concerns over this as well. And I think that in a time when our businesses are facing, you know, closures and not bringing in any income, an incredible disruption to their businesses, that they deserve to have these questions answered about what sort of disruption that they would be expecting from this festival as well. I think that it's really, I think that these questions would have been answered if the organizers were allowed to travel here and answer those questions. And I think it's really unfortunate that we're in a position that none of us can control. But I am not, I'm not comfortable with approving this without the support of our South Barstow businesses. And I would support a postponement for one month. I guess I'm prepared to make that motion, but I think I'll maybe wait just to speak before I do.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Any other discussion from those participating remotely?
Sure, this is Catherine Emanuel.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I completely understand the conundrum that I think we're all in, that again is outside of really anybody's control and it's very unfortunate. I feel conflicted about approving or not, or potentially postponing. As I read how our agenda is laid out, under, there's only one therefore be it resolved under item 13, and it says that this event is also subject to reasonable control and regulation by the Director of Community Services Department. And to me, that seems like, that gives me hope that we would have an administrative, an administrator who would help to facilitate conversations. I can only imagine that everybody's intention here is best intentions, wants to work together, and that this would actually benefit businesses downtown. I also think about the possibility of putting a little bit of hope on the horizon in potentially passing this event tonight, that not only people in our community, but people from around the world who typically travel to come to this event. And the real logistical challenge of needing to advertise, needing to start putting some logistics in place. But here we are in the center of a global pandemic that nobody has planned for, and that's a game changer. So I'm really interested in hearing conversations from colleagues, and I hope that whatever council decides, that we can also still send a message that we very much welcome the festival and that we are listening and supportive of our businesses who need us more than ever these days.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other discussion from those participating remotely?
This is Jeremy Gregor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld. Yeah, I'm feeling similar conflict, I guess, you know, as Councilmember Emanuel said. I, you know, I think it's, I was a little surprised at actually how late this proposal came to us, given how soon it's projected to happen. But I, my understanding is that there's been a lot of back and forth already through the Special Events Committee and our staff, so I appreciate all the work that has gone into it so far. I would not support delaying by a whole month, but I would potentially be open to three weeks, but it seems like even that would put this event at risk. So I'm disappointed that a lot of these details had not been worked out with the bid at the, to this juncture. I'm not sure why that did not happen, but I also was, you know, it wasn't great having an email an hour and a half before a meeting where we have to make a decision, you know, that was not really supportive and had a variety of questions that should have already been answered, and some were actually answered in the packet. But I feel all those questions were just answered by Mr. Pipinger, and I would guess that to relative satisfaction by the bid, but at least by me. So I guess to put this, so I guess I'm not exactly sure if I would support any sort of delay at this point. Another piece of it is just to put this event in perspective, as Mr. Pipinger did, with regard to its size, in terms of the street closures, it is really comparable to International Fall Festival in terms of the number of blocks that would be closed. And, you know, the impact on the businesses on Barstow Street, I think, would be minimal by this, if not be a major benefit. Obviously, Graham Avenue businesses are included within the bid, but a lot of them are participating in the proposed event and would obviously benefit because they appear to be venues. So, yeah, I just wanted to put some of those perspectives out there.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Any other discussion from those participating remotely? Any discussion from councilmembers here in chambers? Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's both regrettable and understandable that there's some uncertainty about this. I mean, it's new, it's being brought downtown, it has the potential of being a significant cultural draw for a lot of visitors to our community. Then it can be of great benefit to the business owners in the downtown area and throughout the area. So it seems to me that being the initial run-through downtown, that a lot of the questions that we may all have are not going to be, to be answered until after it's over. And if we're fortunate enough that it was a success and they come back and want to do it again next year, we'll have a lot more information to make a decision on. So, given the timeframe, given the unusual circumstances worldwide, trying to promote this is going to be a challenge, and I wish them well if we do it, if we approve it. But I, I think any delay at all is going to further jeopardize this. So I think the risk is justified to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Klinkhammer. Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I'm just weighing in on that one point. I had imagined in the therefore be it resolved, that the last statement saying that further subject to cancellation or limitations and compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local orders related to declared health emergency, that there's going to be just lots of conversation happening yet. So to me, it becomes the desire of the event. So to me, it, it becomes the desire of the event hosts, how much they want to risk. I, I think what we're asked to do at this point is to give a green light based on it being successful. So I'm going to make that assumption. And I also thought I heard Mr. Pipinger say that the map that we're looking at is incorrect and that Barstow is not going to be blocked off. Is that correct? So really, we're looking at pedestrian traffic just on Graham and those three intersecting streets, which really makes it a pretty tight event. So I, I think that's pretty limited as far as daytime restriction to access to the downtown businesses. And I guess the, the other comment that I, before coming here and, and hearing those concerns from my peers, my concern was here is another very large event, that's really a large piece of it is the consumption of alcohol. And I, I always, I'm always hoping that I'm going to find my voice to say, boy, if Eau Claire could only be very, very successful for something that's just soft drinks and water. But I do like some of the things that they have done and that staff has supported them in moving the event towards managing the consumption. I, I'm particularly interested in the fact that they're using non-disposable cups so that there's not going to be a lot of plastic waste, that they're not going to allow open containers, which I understand was part of their original proposal. So that, that conscious effort to be conscious consumers of alcohol, I think is a, a direction that we're moving in the right way. But that, that does concern me, that, that simply does concern me. I would like to see us being all about art and appreciation without that, our role of being number one or number two drinking city in the, in the nation. So I have some other suggestions, but I'm going, I'm just going to let, let this go and see if there's other comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Brugge.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I also, as Councilmember Beaton talked about, I have concerns about the lack of support. That's as I'm reading it too, the lack of support or fully support of the South Barstow bid. I think the silence of the businesses is quite loud. In this process, we want to support our local businesses, especially in this time. I, you know, the fact, and it's more, maybe now they have answers to some of their questions, but the fact that they're not reaching out, working with the local businesses from, our evidence suggests, or we haven't gotten any emails suggesting that, is concerning as well. It's just the process. I just really think we need to support our local businesses in this time, like I said, and I really, I find it concerning that there's really no support right now for this festival that I'm seeing and I have not heard through email or, and I know our public comment is limited right now, but so I haven't heard anything from Visit Eau Claire, anything in support of a, a big festival. So that, I guess I'm concerned about that and I know the timeline is short, but you know, three weeks, I could be open to supporting that delay just so our local businesses can give support to the festival.
Any other, Councilmember Lawre.
I, I, I think, thanks for President Weld, I think that the, I'm disappointed they will not get feedback from the local businesses, but I think that if we delay this event, will be jeopardize the, the way of the, this event, because I know that when they create events, it will take a little time to do it, but if we delay, then we will not have enough time for them to, you know, advertising on their events. So I'm afraid that I'm, I would not have, I don't want to see they cancel this event. I think that it's time for us to bring visions to the community and I, I know that, disappointed that they will not contact local businesses, but I, I would let the council make a decision, but I will be supporting this to, not to postpone at this point.
Any other discussion from councilmembers here in chamber? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. As I read through the, the description of the special event, my concern actually took a slightly, or my interest took a slightly different track. And that would be the connection of this event to the entire city of Eau Claire. With our special event summers and the way that we're focused on music, this particular special event almost looks like using downtown as a venue and that it draws all of the attraction and traffic downtown, which is one way of doing the event. And I hadn't noticed, but heard during the presentation, that the connection that the city will have to the performers is by ticketed events at the Pablo. It had occurred to me that if we wanted to really connect our whole community to this event and to the, the music offerings, that to use those opportunities to interact with the talent that is being brought to Eau Claire, might have been free events out in other parks or in other neighborhoods or other venues to draw people who may not be financially able to do something downtown. So I, I was hoping that, well, I'm hoping that other innovations of this event might, might have something that connects with the community more directly and not just as ticket holders. The other thing that I, I liked about the way this event was proposed as, as a change from their previous events is instead of being outside and camping, they're really increasing the impact of the room tax and the income that comes to the city through the room rentals. But what, what it doesn't do then is allow the people who are coming here to get on the bike trails and move out into the communities and to really experience what else we have to offer. That may be something that they're planning to do in some of their greeting packets to people that are ticket holders, but I would like to see these kinds of events that are really utilizing the downtown to very intentionally move the people into our community so that they would come again. So I appreciate what other councilmembers are discussing and contemplating about asking the, the event organizers to come to us with more specific answers about downtown businesses. But I think that they've really provided a lot of information about how they have responded to the staff's requests, confined it, clarified it. I see that Erin is actually here and he hasn't offered any information about what the bid has, has said. But if there is some other information, maybe that would come forward. Thank you.
Does Councilmember Christopherson have a question for Mr. White?
If, if Mr. White is willing to come up and, have you had any communication with the, the bid?
Yes, and the, the area that Mr. Pipinger referred to was Erin's House, who is the current chair of the South Barstow bid. So we have been working with both the group to try, try and connect them with the bid members. Conversations, we feel the impact's going to be pretty minimal. Unfortunately, the timing of the shutdown of airlines and the organizers who are in Ireland absolutely occurred the day after the bid met and asked for some, for some additional face-to-face communication and it just wasn't possible. So we'll, we'll continue to work with them as we move forward. I do know that talking to organizers, one of the things they are coming up with is they're, they're at the point where they have to make certain decisions and take certain actions to make the event go forward, which they can't do without this process being complete. So that is one of the reasons why they are, are still seeking to try and get the, the events from a passive and continue to move forward. That is a mission they're facing there. But we'll, the downtown clerk, continue to work with both the bids and the, and the organizers to make sure that, that the businesses are the effective and understand what will be more likely.
I, I appreciate that feedback. I don't know if you would be comfortable in making this assessment, but knowing what their concerns were, would you say they're really substantive that would prevent it from going forward?
I, I think the mission sir was, was will there, will there be sections that will be significantly blocked off or reduced hours, which becomes a lot more critical now that they're already facing a time period which they can't operate today anyway. I, I think looking at the hours that the festival tends to go, it's not going to impact most of the retailers, most of them are closing down around five o'clock anyway, so there's very little, it's, you know, it's a minor impact on the total end. There may be some opportunity for them to gather business as a thousand festival owners in the pendant community and or down in the area. One of the things that Deki will be planning to work with is showing some opportunities for local businesses and maybe do some hours, experience some hours during some of the events that we want to, some of the ideal opportunity to capture some additional business that they wouldn't otherwise. But we definitely want to make sure that there was a third law.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. White?
This is Catherine, I would have a question.
Go ahead, Council Vice President.
Thank you so much, Council President Weld. Thank you, Mr. White. One of the questions I had was I noticed that there was a letter specifically from the South Barstow bid, and I'm wondering if Deki has had a chance to review this and/or any of the other bids. Of course, one bid voice is definitely very important and I think they will be most impacted. And I wonder if any of the other bids have this on their agenda or have indicated any feedback?
There has been some discussion with the other bids. For South Barstow, this was of particular interest because they talked about shutting down streets within their districts specifically. One of the, you know, some of the other bids indicate they're, again, they think there may be some opportunity to potentially capture some additional business, which has been, had been mentioned a time or two. Communication's actually been, hasn't been real significant from the other bids in terms of that. There's, they're aware of it, they're looking at how they can maybe promote their different districts to, to capture some of the folks that would be coming down in the community, but we're still looking at, you know, ways we can ultimately help promote, you know, the broad district as a whole. There'll be a few things coming down from Deki. Hopefully the, the current situation with COVID-19 won't delay too much, but we're putting out our new maps from Death Island Claire, which identifies all the businesses throughout all four districts. Those types of information will be available and will help kind of guide folks to what's available in the community in terms of different attractions, different retailers, different businesses that they can, they can frequent.
Is there a follow-up?
Thank you very much. No, that's sufficient, thank you.
Any other questions from council, both remotely or in chamber?
This is Jeremy.
Go ahead, Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you, Mr. White. I guess if you could clarify it, perhaps again, the, the places in which people will need a ticket or a wristband in order to enter, is that, is it really just the venues that will have shows and then is it, is it just the Schaefer lot? Or can someone just walk down Graham Avenue, for example, outside of the Pablo Center and still visit businesses without having a ticket to the Eau Claire Music Festival?
I'm not sure the specifics on that. We haven't been a part of that level of, of planning for the event. I don't think that, that a ticket or wristband will require just for, for general movement, but we're not going to be able to answer that.
Mr. Pipinger is going to try and answer as well.
Sure. Our understanding is that you will have to get a ticket per year full and that's how that will work for those venues. And that's how they'll know how many people will be at a venue and that's where they'll cut off the numbers. So that was their, that was their vision, that's their plan.
I, I think the question was, can the public still be on Graham Avenue or those other, other streets that are being closed off without a wristband or a ticket? Do the, will the ticket only be necessary to get onto the staged area?
In, in the staged area and those venues that are ultimately blue will have those opportunities to, to get into those. Will you be able to walk down there during the time? Sure, I mean, you can walk down, if you're going to go into one of those venues, you'll have to have that ticket.
Councilmember Gregor, does that answer your question?
Yeah, just to, so basically if someone wanted to walk down the street and access a business on Graham Avenue or Gibson or Eau Claire Street, they could still do that, it's just they, you couldn't drive down the street.
That is correct.
That's, that's my understanding. Okay. So that does not limit business in not, in the same way by any means, as close, as having, you know, you can still get in there, I guess, is what I wanted to, to clarify to the rest of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Any other discussion from those participating remotely or in chamber?
I guess, yes, this is Kate Beaton. I, I'm having a hard sense, like knowing whether I should make a motion for a postponement or not. I guess I'll just say a final word that, you know, I, I won't be supporting this today. I, I think, you know, the thought of approving, approving an event that impacts our entire downtown without any, without one word of support from our local businesses is just, like inconceivable to me. I just, I just, I just don't know how I would be able to do that at the time. I, I really, I've been to the Eau Claire's Music Fest, Music Festival and I love it and I feel, you know, I feel for the organizers who are in a difficult position right now. And I, and, you know, I want this event to be happening, but I think that we need to be smart about, about its planning and I think that we need to give our local, I, I think that, you know, we owe it to our local businesses to allow them to have, to have their questions answered and to feel comfortable about something that's going to, that will be impacting them, but we don't know how, because we don't know, we don't have these questions answered. We hope that it would impact them positively, but we just don't, we just don't know. And, and so, I won't be supporting today, but I would support a, a motion for a postponement if, if somebody else wants to make that.
This is Andrew, I'd like to make a motion to postpone for three weeks.
I'll second it, this is Kate.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Worthman and a seconded, and a second by Councilmember Beaton to postpone until our first meeting, 13th and 14th of April. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Council President.
Go ahead. Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I, I think it's important, we have, we have the time to do this. I think it's important to get our businesses on board and have the conversations with them so they feel comfortable and they have all of their, their questions answered. I just think we move together with this, we have a stronger event if we have everyone on the same page.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. Councilmember Beaton, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I guess I would, I would agree with Councilmember Worthman. I think, you know, in, in three weeks, for me to be able to support this, I would need to see some, some conversation and real, you know, positive and intentional work done between event organizers and businesses and to see a clear support from our business community, particularly there in the South Barstow area. And so I understand it's, it's hard right now with the way the world is, but I hope that if this, if this postponement- if this, if this postponement, if we do go ahead with postponement, that the time is used wisely to make those connections.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Any other discussion from those participating remotely?
This is Catherine.
Go ahead, Council Vice President.
Thank you so much. I think at this point, I won't be able to support this amendment. My understanding, and I certainly invite any correction if I have a misunderstanding, is that time is of the essence, that the event organizers need to have this approval up or down today so that they can move forward. And I do have concerns that postponing the event will gravely jeopardize an event that will bring 6,000 people to our downtown, which I believe has been a goal of getting more people to our community so that we cultivate a habit of not only citizens from Eau Claire going downtown, but also people who've come to visit and who have fallen in love with our community. I think the timing is just rotten, and absolutely nobody's fault. But I feel that we're being tasked to make a decision on the merit of this event with or without the benefit and the high merit of having more businesses involved in the discussion. As I understand from the way that the event is written in the resolution, that there will be reasonable control and regulation by our Community Services Department Director and Aaron White, who is the Executive Director of DEKI and works with Economic Development, that he shared that, you know, he's certainly committed to helping to facilitate these conversations, and also having a great deal of trust for our business owners and applicants that, you know, their public intention has been to work together on this. And the only thing is, the timing is just difficult, and we're really in a pickle. But if I have to choose between potentially having the event or not, I would err on the side of having the event and putting my trust and belief that the parties who need to work together will work together, and this will be successful for our community.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other discussion from those participating remotely?
Now, this is Andrew. I just wanted to clarify, because I had thought, I heard from Mr. Pipinger that a three-week postponement does not change whether the event could happen or not.
Just one moment, Councilmember Worthman.
I guess to clarify, I don't believe I said that. I said I'd be up to the applicant, but I know they are in a position that they have to start marketing this. And so, it was mentioned that several of the acts that they're anticipating being here are world-renowned acts that would come to the city. So that's a plan for it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Pipinger. Any other discussion from those participating remotely? Any discussion from those here in chambers? Councilmember Klinkhammer.
I won't support this amendment to postpone either. I think the probability of postponement, causing this not to occur downtown, is much greater than the probability of having all of our questions answered in three weeks.
Thank you, Councilmember Klinkhammer. Any other discussion regarding the amendment to postpone?
I guess I would, I will also not be in support of the postponement. I too agree that I trust that those that are going to be part of this process and organizing it and making sure it's successful are going to work together to make sure that it is successful and that it is something that we'll want back next year. And the business owners and the city of Eau Claire will realize and understand that it was, you know, a good investment for our community. And so, I think, I think moving forward, looking at the concern about time and making sure that this still can happen, I trust that it can, and I trust that the right decisions will be made to make sure that everyone's voices are heard. If there is any more discussion?
This is Jeremy.
Go ahead, Councilmember McGregor.
Thank you, President Weld. I, yeah, I don't, I don't plan to support the, I do not plan to support a postponement because I do think that staff and DEKI and the bid and businesses will be able to continue to refine any of the uncertainty and turn it into opportunity ultimately. So I just, I think there's been a lot of great work that's been put into this. I am disappointed that there, you know, some of these final questions maybe haven't been answered, but I think a lot of them were tonight, so I'm satisfied that we can make this event happen if indeed the world allows it to.
Thank you, Councilmember McGregor. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
No.
Emanuel?
No.
Gregert?
No.
Klinkhammer?
No.
Lor?
No.
Weld?
No.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
And the motion to, or the amendment to postpone is defeated, seven to three. So back to the original agenda item and the resolution. Is there any further discussion in that regard? Any discussion?
This is Catherine.
Go ahead, Council Vice President.
Thank you so much. I just want to say that I am very empathetic, and I want to proceed with respect and empathy for any concerns that have been out there, and to just elevate and amplify my trust and expectations with our city that there will be very compassionate shepherding of communication between the bid and the applicant, and I am absolutely confident that can be done. The other is just a pivot to just the events in general and the incredible value of this moving downtown. As most of you know, I had the opportunity to travel to Southeast Asia in the beginning of January, and I got to see Bony Bear concerts in Bangkok, Thailand. And I met so many people there who couldn't believe I lived in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I mean, that is just on their bucket list of their life to come to Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Some guy even had a Bony Bear album on his, tattooed on his thigh, and couldn't believe that I lived in the same city. And so, I think this is just an exceptional opportunity, and not only for people to travel, but in the status of the world right now, maybe, just maybe, we will have a world that's safe to travel in over the summer, and that Eau Claire, Wisconsin might be our communities and our international communities' first place to come and connect with one another in person.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other discussion regarding the resolution?
This is Jeremy.
Go ahead, Councilmember McGregor.
Thank you, President Weld. I guess, you know, obviously, this is a major event, and, you know, hopefully, it'll, there'll be, I'm sure there'll be ways to improve it in the future based on feedback and participation, whether that be from attendees or from businesses impacted by it. But I guess to put it into some perspective with other events that we approve, you know, we often don't necessarily have, you know, a huge number of contacts that come our way in support of something, and we often don't have a lot of contact from businesses or entities against either. In this case, we have no letters opposing the event either, even if we don't have any necessarily in support. So it seems more neutral to me at this point. So that's one reason I'm pretty comfortable to support this.
Thank you, Councilmember McGregor. Any other discussion? Seeing, Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. During our conversation, when I read this in my packet over the weekend, I, it just seemed like such a huge, lots of moving parts and people walking all over the place. But with the pandemic in place, we should, we should really be imagining this as being overwhelming, because I think between now and July 11th, we're going to need to generate that kind of energy to just get people coming. And people, the businesses on Graham Avenue and Barstow will be grateful that these individuals are coming to Eau Claire. It'll be like a breath of sunshine. Then to put this in perspective with the festival, Fall Festival, that closes down Barstow and Graham from one end of town to the other, and most of the vendors on the street are not the businesses. They're actually booths that are in competition with those downtown businesses, and it's popular and people love it. So I'm just, I'm just thinking this is a new thing. It may be just the right thing that's going to happen after this very dark, very still point in our spring. But I want to, I want to surround this with a lot of energy, of hopefulness, and success. I could support this, and I hope they do, and I hope they do well.
Thank you, Council. Councilmember Christopherson. Any other discussion? Seeing or hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
No.
And that agenda item passes nine to one. Agenda item number 14, a resolution granting a temporary Class B fermented malt beverage and temporary Class B wine license to Downtown Eau Claire Inc. Good evening, Mr. Nick.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Weld and council members. So thank you for that good policy discussion and decision. Hopefully, this will be a shorter subset of that, but I think certainly one we can all agree on that several council members gave voice to, that if this event can happen in July 10th and 11th in Little Old Eau Claire, Wisconsin, I think we'll all be happy to celebrate together and responsibly toast with one or two glasses of beer or wine if we're legally of age. And so, that's, that's the issue before we hear the same image that was briefly shown here at the beginning of Mr. Pipinger's presentation, but this time I'll focus on specifically, really, this site plan sketch that's applicable to 202 Graham Avenue. That's the private lot that they're asking you to grant a temporary Class B fermented malt beverage and temporary Class B wine license for. This would be the only area that's involved with the temporary consumption, you know, the consumption of alcohol by the temporary licenses otherwise those event participants that were shown. You know, on the other map that have liquor licenses, whether it's the Firehouse or Pablo or the Lismore, those sort of places would also have events, but they operate under their own alcohol license, their own permanent alcohol license. There is no objection to the issuance of this license as event organizers modify the plan to make it consistent with state law and our local policies. This space that again is being shown on that private lot just to the south of the Pablo Arts Center would be entirely fenced in as, as other events of this, of this sort usually are in the city of Eau Claire. Alcohol controls would be in place, including licensed bartenders on property, wristbanding of individuals both to indicate whether they are of age, whether they are 21 or older, or also wristbanding them to indicate if they're underage individuals. There would be, in this instance, reusable cups, as was mentioned earlier in the discussion, but volunteers and/or other event staff that would be posted at any entries or exit points to make sure that, you know, any alcoholic beverage was consumed only on premise, not taken off premise or between those premise locations, so we didn't have any open intoxicants or issues with open containers out on our sidewalks or streets. So with the event now completely located on a private parcel, you know, again, no objection either by special events or license review members. Happy to stand for any questions as best I'm able.
Do council members participating remotely have any questions for Mr. Nick? Hearing none, do any council members here in chamber have questions for Mr. Nick? Thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember Worthman and seconded by Councilmember Lor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Council members participating remotely? Council members in chamber? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to share a question that, that I thought was helpful in understanding how intentional and thoughtful both the staff and these event organizers are, is the way that they have this space that serves alcoholic beverages, but of course, they're limited with their ban for a certain number. But coordinating the service here with the other event sites so that the number of persons don't overburden the number of people that can be in a particular space at a particular time, which that's, to me, is when these kinds of events begin to get out of, out of hand, when you're overwhelming the servers or you're overwhelming the people that are watching, the patrons. So I think there's, there's some conscious goals here, and I would support this.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Klinkhammer?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
And that item passes nine to zero. Agenda item number 15 is a resolution accepting and appropriating a Wisconsin Clean Diesel Grant from the Department of Natural Resources to be used for the purchase of electric lawn mowers. Because this item amends the budget at two-thirds vote or eight affirmative votes is needed for passage. Mr. Pipinger.
The attached resolution authorizes the city of Eau Claire to execute a grant agreement with the Department of Natural Resources to fund two electric lawn mowers for the Community Services Department operations. Up to $24,188.40 is available to the city on reimbursement basis as costs are incurred. The total cost of the project under the grant agreement is $53,752, of which the city is required to provide 55% or $29,563.60. The city's share of the costs is already appropriated from within the essential equipment capital fund. An appropriation for the DNR share of the costs is required in support of the attached resolution. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Pipinger. Any council members participating remotely have any questions? Any council members here in chamber have? Any councilmembers here in chamber have questions? Thank you very much. On a motion then by Councilmember Christopherson and seconded by Councilmember Clinkhammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? From those participating remotely? In chamber? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to congratulate our staff for having the opportunity for us to even accept this grant. It's so aligned with the values and the work that we've been doing. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Lorr?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 16 is a resolution accepting and appropriating a stewardship local assistance grant from the Department of Natural Resources to be used for McDonough Park active aging elements. Because this item amends the budget at two-thirds vote or eight affirmative votes is needed for passage. Mr. Pippinger?
Thank you. The attached resolution authorizes the city of Eau Claire to execute a grant agreement with the Department of Natural Resources to fund active aging elements at McDonough Park. The active aging elements include amenities such as trail improvements, restrooms, lighting, benches, an elevated garden and a prairie butterfly area among others. Up to $204,578 is available to the city on a reimbursement basis as costs are incurred. The city will be responsible for managing the funding of up to $204,579, which is being financed by ongoing private fundraising. An appropriation of $409,157 is included as part of the resolution which represents both the DNR share and the city's share of costs for this project. Expenses for the city's share of the costs that are being privately fundraised will not occur until fundraising goals are met. Any questions?
Do councilmembers participating remotely have any questions for Mr. Pippinger? Councilmembers in chamber? Councilmember Clinkhammer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Pippinger, is there a time limit as to when this money has to be raised by?
There typically is a time limit on the grant funding. I'd have to go back and take a look at that, but it's typically two or three years on that. The group that is fundraising, they do have tens of thousands of dollars in fundraising that they've already done. So this will go a long way with adding those amenities to the project.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to expand a little on that answer. The improvements have to be made by the time this grant runs out. Do you have any idea how much they really expect to fundraise? I mean, like $204,000, that's a bunch of money.
It is. This is one of those groups and we have found that it's really doing quite well. In fact, they just redid the parking lot, the drive area, and then also resurfaced and painted their pickup log courts.
Nice.
And they went ahead and redid that before we got this grant, but they certainly have goals to utilize as much of this money as possible.
Another bright spot.
Any other questions from council for Mr. Pippinger? Both those remotely and in chamber? Thank you very much. On a motion then by Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Anderson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion from those participating remotely? Hearing none, is there any discussion here in chamber? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Lorr?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously. Agenda item number 17 is a resolution authorizing a development and purchase agreement for city-owned property located at 100 North Farwell Street, otherwise known as the Railroad Lot. Mr. Nick?
Mr. Nick again? Getting up a brief presentation. In addition to this presentation, materials were sent to council earlier in the day from the developer, Merge Urban Design, and one of their financial partners as well, Skydeck LLC. So we have those that you can refer to as well in terms of their overview of the project intent for this site. The Railroad Lot is a city-owned property that currently is utilized as a parking lot. You'll see a preliminary site plan for it that also gives you some indication of where it's located. So it's bordered by North Farwell to the east and North Barstow to the west. To the north, there's existing buildings in part, some future development opportunities for Merge. Future development opportunities for Merge may be on this project, being in the northwest quadrant of the parcel the city owns. And then bordered, most notably, and I think with the greatest impact for this project, the Eau Claire River and trail system that we have in the north bank of the Eau Claire River in this vicinity. The city council gave a go-ahead to indicate that this property was excess and potential development site. In 2019, an RFP, a request for proposal, was put out with numerous proposals. And the Merge team was selected by the city as the party that we wanted to work towards this development and purchase agreement. A MOU, or random of understanding, was entered into that with Merge by the city and approved by city council last August. And the proposal that I'm presenting here, I'm pleased to say, is consistent with that MOU and would, if accepted, hopefully start construction later this year of a five-story mixed-use building. It is timely and one of the reasons it is still on this agenda that we tried to tighten up matters that are only of immediate concern is because Merge has indicated that they usually have about a six-month architectural design to final plans to break ground timeframe for their projects. And with approval today, they would be able to start commence, you know, commence construction still later in 2020. So their, quote, "break ground" timeframe is, you know, in September and be able to get enough work started on the site that they could then get it enclosed and winter wouldn't slow construction of the project within hopeful completion at some point in 2021. This, what you're seeing here is a preliminary site plan that gives you some idea of the layout of the site and how it would integrate with existing trail facilities to the south with the red sort of swipe across the southern edge there being a public easement that the public would enjoy along overturning a riverfront promenade. So with the intent of designing a very pedestrian and bicycle-friendly space that would integrate between our trail system and their private development. And through our redevelopment efforts, we've been successful with other downtown partners, whether it's the Haymarket Plaza and Pablo and Environs or RCU or JAM Spaces that Merge public and private. To the north of that is then the layout generally of the building itself, which again, a five-story building, is showing here really the potential layout of that first floor commercial with two larger commercial tenancies and then a number of micro or startup tenancies to the center of the space. Whether those larger spaces turn out to be the bank and restaurant is potentially, you know, specked out or not, you know, certainly remains to be seen. But that's what's hoped. And the upper stories would be 76 units of residential, a number of which would be at workforce rates between that 80 to 120% of county median income. Again, continuing to move north on the site, you have surface parking and also you'll see, we can make it out, but that sort of down arrow, kind of a, to the, yeah, thank you, Mr. Roll, but that's where access to underground parking would be. So the site affords a combination of underground parking, surface parking, and also utilization of our city-owned North Barstow parking ramp. The kind of two-tiered red stripe to the north is a public access easement specifically for the benefit of the existing businesses in the building to the north, Galloway Grill, Scooters, among others. That would maintain both fire and building code access to those rear properties, maintaining the setbacks needed and also access for emergency equipment. Final layout and accommodation of, you know, the existing current rear patio, which would need to be modified, but is something that we've actively worked on with the owner and his representatives and that Merge is committed to in the agreement to continue to work towards post-approval and pre-closing. But this would allow those businesses to maintain fire and just customer access to tubing from those back and true ways. The next, this slide and the next give you some conceptual elevations of what the project would look like from this vantage point. You're looking generally southward at the north facade of the building across the redesigned rebuilt parking lot, again, first floor being the commercial and upper levels being residential. And this vantage point again looks at a conceptual elevation design more in a southeasterly or northeasterly viewpoint, where you're kind of looking at it from somewhat probably top of bank as you come up from our trail system somewhat near the Barstow Street side of the trail and looking at that riverfront promenade in addition to the south and west-facing facades of the building. In terms of key aspects of the development agreement itself, it calls for a $500,000 market purchase price of the property. Again, it's a city parcel, so it's $500,000 purchase price by Merge payable to the city. It is partially offset by a $200,000 credit that the city would extend to developer in kind of a negotiated offset for those fairly substantial easement rights that we talked about in the initial preliminary site plan, both to facilitate that riverfront promenade and also continued access to the existing building to the north. I think we've already touched on sort of the size, scope of the mixed-use building. And to put a number to it, private investment is expected on this project in excess of $11 million with a expected start date later this year, but required start date within the next year and a half approximately. And the construction jobs ongoing, jobs on the commercial level in addition to housing units that would attend to that. In terms of other key financial aspects, this is within one of your TIF or tax, the financing districts. There is a TIF cash grant developer incentive in this agreement in the amount of $1 million. That, in addition to ensuring that the project would happen, without which this incentive could not, would not occur meets the statutory but for test, including after a financial analysis that the city conducted of developers pro forma. But in addition to that, it develops or assists to finance a number of benefits that the broader public would enjoy beyond just the tenants, including that riverfront promenade space with the public easement over it, a value guarantee of the property and the property taxes on that amount of $10 million beginning in 2023, if not before. Again, whenever we have those value guarantees, they're just a minimum. So the property is taxed based on its fair market values of every gen or one, doesn't mean it just pays $10 million. If it's worth 11, if it's worth 5 million or 15 million, it is taxed at 15 million. But that is a floor that ensures a return on investment for the public tax dollars being put into this property. And also affords the urban densities, including again, those commercial tenants and 76 new residential units in the city of Eau Claire and specifically near downtown. And with that, Anthony, try to answer any questions.
Do councilmembers participating remotely have any questions for Mr. Nick? Councilmembers here in chambers? Thank you very much. On a motion then by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Council Vice President Emanuel, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmembers participating remotely? Councilmembers here in chamber? Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President. It's so exciting to see these projects move along. I mean, this is a pretty good-looking parking lot and the downtown deserves to have something that is so consumable by the general public. I mean, it really increases the value of the pathway, the hiking trail, the bicycle use. This is very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other discussion?
And this is Jeremy.
Go ahead, Councilmember Gregor.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld. Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff for all the work they did in negotiating this. And I think, you know, when we first had the excess land question in front of us a year ago, I was open-minded to what we would see. And this is definitely kind of meeting my expectations. And I was, you know, obviously, there's a lot of great public uses other than a parking lot, but this kind of combines public and private uses in, I think, a pretty reasonable way. And it's a mixed-use development that includes housing that we really need. So I, you know, I plan to support this. I do like the use of the ramp as well. To the west, the North Barstow ramp, so that you don't necessarily have to have all the parking on site there on a riverfront site. So, yeah, I think it's a great project.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Any other discussion from council? Seeing or hearing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Lorr?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that resolution passes unanimously. Agenda item number 18 is an ordinance rezoning a property located at 3801 Gateway Drive from TC3 to C3P and to adopt the general development plan with site plan for a commercial building. This agenda item, I would imagine, will seek a motion for post- This agenda item, I would imagine, will seek a motion for postponement, but maybe we could get some insight. Council or city attorney Nick?
Thank you. Yes, public hearings for both of these items, both 18 and the following 19, were scheduled for last night and due to our current emergency status, were postponed until a time where we could develop remote attendance options, not only for council members, but also for the members of the public that were sufficiently robust to make sure you had full input on these important decisions. So we would ask that you postpone both with a public hearing intended for Monday, April 13, at your evening 7:00 p.m. meeting, and council legislative action to follow the next day on Tuesday, April 14. Thank you.
Is there a motion to postpone?
Can I move?
Emanuel?
Okay. Councilmember Emanuel has moved to postpone until the 13th and 14th of April. Is there a second? Councilmember Clinkhammer is seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk? I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Clinkhammer?
Is that a motion for both of these or individually?
I think we'll do the one at a time. So we'll just be addressing agenda item number 18 for postponement. Any other discussion? Seeing or hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Laura?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
And that item is postponed unanimously. Agenda item number 19, an ordinance rezoning a property located northeast of Camden Court and Aspen Res Drive from TR1A to R1 to R1 and R2P and to adopt the general development plan with site plan for twin homes. Council have any questions for Mr. Nick? Seeing or hearing none, is there a motion to postpone this agenda item?
I'll postpone.
Councilmember Bergy has motioned it. Councilmember Laura has seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Clinkhammer?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
And that item is postponed unanimously. We have three items, three ordinances for introduction. Agenda item number 20 is an ordinance rezoning property located on the west of Lurch Avenue from TR1A to C3P and to R3P and to adopt the general development plan with site plan for residential housing development. Agenda item number 21 is an ordinance in accordance with Section 66.0217 Wisconsin statutes, annexing to the City of Eau Claire and particularly to the Ninth Assessment Ward, Fourth Aldermanic District, being part of a parcel of land located in the southwest corridor of the southeast corridor and in the southeast corridor of the southeast corridor of Section 14 Township 27 North Range 10 West Town of Union, Eau Claire County. Agenda item number 22 is a charter ordinance relating to the city council and the reapportionment of Aldermanic Districts of the City of Eau Claire. Adoption of a charter ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of elected members of the governing body. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up any of these three ordinances this evening? Those council members participating remotely? Councilmembers here in chamber? Seeing no interest, we will move on to announcements. City Manager Peters?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I don't have any announcements tonight. Only an expression of appreciation for your support, guidance, and leadership as we're facing this historic and unprecedented event. And I wish you peace and health to your families until we meet again on April 13th and 14th. Remember to stay calm and stop the spread, and together we will get through this.
Thank you, City Manager Peters. Are there any other announcements from those participating remotely or here in chamber? Seeing or hearing none, if there is no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the City of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912 or TDD 715-839-1689 or write. Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148.